Twenty twenty one meeting of Valley Hill. The first item this evening is a continued public hearing for thirty Locust Street, special residential use, townhouse dwelling. Jim, you want to read the legal requirements for the meeting?
So we've, we've already opened the hearing, so you're good there. We are both hybrid, so you are welcome to join remotely and in person. The board is, well, you guys are in person, but the board is welcome to do both remote or in person at this time, given the governor's extension of the executive order. However, a quorum has to be present and the chairman also has to be present. That doesn't really pertain to the planning board as you guys are all, all there in person. Tonight with, with Bungay Brook, Locust Street Development. It's been some time since you guys have heard from them last. The applicant has been providing a number of updates to the plan set, working through some of the stormwater aspects with our peer review engineer, who is here tonight, Frank Di Pietro, and also has made a significant headway on the concerns regarding sewer. And I know it was a very important to the board. So there's a lot, lot to update on. You do have in your package, plan sets, updated plan sets. And again, as I mentioned, the peer reviewers here that can discuss some of it. However, you know, given that it was provided just this past Friday, that needs a little bit more time for us to vet the, the real technical aspects. But we can certainly have a good conversation at least this evening.
So for those that are here in person and Zoom, Frank, you still have some more work to do on this, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've gone through a preliminary view, looked at the plans, looked at the reports, begun to have some comments, but I still need some additional work to be done to finalize my.
Just so the public is aware, we still have additional work that needs to be done. That will probably be presented the next time this is on our agenda, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Anything else, Jim?
No, not for, for this item. I, I know the applicant is present this evening and I, I see that the applicant also is online. So I, you know, they certainly can walk you through some of the updates and provide you some, some, some updates on sidewalks and sewer and stormwater that I know the board has had a lot of questions on.
I'd like to turn over the applicant if he gives an overview. And also, Jim, the plan sets were available at your office.
That's correct, at the office or online. Either way, you can definitely, if you like PDFs, you can go straight to our planning board website and get them all right there. If you prefer a hard copy, Amy's always a great customer service and can print you off something if you needed.
So for those in the public, if you want to see the new plan set, they're online or can be viewed at town hall. I believe Amy can make applicable copies if they're needed. Also for the public, this is the first time we have seen these updated plan reviews. So the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Almati. I'm a principal and registered landscape architect with Pain Design Collaborative. Steve McCallson from Elite Home Builders. And we also have Mike Scott on the Zoom call, who is principal and at, at my firm and the registered professional engineer on the project.
Also Leo DeSova is my partner.
And there's the owner of Bungay Brook, she's here. So just a point to the transparency. I'm familiar with the Gurus for probably thirty years being in the Valley Hill Mines. I just want to make that clear. You know, it's a small town, everyone knows them.
So I have PDFs of the plans here. Sure.
She's going to do the share screen.
Okay.
She just texted me. She made you a co-host, so you should be good to go to share.
So everyone can see that now?
Sure, you wanted to move your chair or sit over here?
I'm good.
Okay.
This might be a little bit slow because I'm working off of the flash drive. But if the board wouldn't mind, I'd like to start with stormwater if possible.
Sure.
And try to get to the grading and drainage sheet, index sheet, just kind of overview of the study.
While I was doing that, I'd like to just inform the board that we got to the final goal scored. We have the agreement with the church.
Okay, we'll get to that at a appropriate time. I know that the neighbors will be happy with that.
Yeah, so that, we haven't had the outline for a long time yet.
So I'll hand this portion over to Mike Scott. I said it was on the Zoom call, he's trying to walk you through the stormwater changes.
Okay. Mike?
Yep, this is Mike Scott, can everyone hear me?
We can hear.
Okay, I saw a thumb and a nod, thank you. Yeah, since the last go around, we've revised the stormwater calculations, which of course in some ways resulted in revisions to the grading plan as well. BSC had commented and it's in your regulations to use the Cornell rainfall, which of course is a greater depth than the presently used TP forty rainfall. The greater depths resulted in the need for more volume on site. And so we've taken the opportunity to expand some of the stormwater basins. At the same time, from the conservation standpoint, we moved the stormwater basins out of the fifty foot buffer so that there's no work within the fifty foot buffer zone. That was a request they made. We also ran the stormwater calculations for the twenty-five year frozen ground conditions. And that's all documented in the stormwater report. The summary is that there is no more water leaving the site, stormwater runoff leaving the site and for any of the storms or for the twenty-five year frozen ground event. And because this entire site relies on infiltration, we looked at the overflows of each of the basins and provided a little more information on how those overflows would be constructed. We looked at the flow rates out of each of those basins. And even though it's improbable they'll ever fill and overflow, the, should that happen, you know, that they're stable and sufficiently wide and and armored with grass or vegetation for the low velocities. We also, because this is a groundwater or a, yeah, zone two, call for every catch basin to be a stormwater quality type unit. And that provides adequate pretreatment, upgrading or upstream prior to discharge to the infiltration basins. Within the infiltration basins, we added infiltration trenches. So something to promote contact from the surface to, to a few feet below grade i- in the event that there is frozen ground. And, and then we also added a note as maybe we discussed here, I can't recall, which we were at the Concom and the planning board back to back both times. In the test pits we did or the borings we did, there were lenses of finer, sort of a confining layer, finer, wetter sand. And so what we called for in, in areas where that's discovered during construction, that that layer be removed below the bottom of the infiltration basins. So, so as not to block flow, to prevent exfiltration through the soil. Generally speaking, we found six to eight feet of dry material with, in some of the boring holes, a couple of feet of a dense wet soil and then below that, another ten feet of dry material. So it's, it's evident that's being trapped from above and not coming up from below, you know, because of the dry soil below. So if that, that lens is perforated or punctured, we'll, we'll have good contact. And in all cases, the bottom of these infiltration basins is significantly higher than either Bungay Brook to the south or the reservoir to the north and well above the wetland elevation. So there is any kind of groundwater separation concerns here. That's basically what we did on the stormwater side of things. We ended up adding two small infiltration areas, one behind the existing clubhouse. And that was really a function of when we ran the Cornell rainfall depths, there was slight, a slight increase behind the clubhouse. And there's really not a great overflow location there. So the, the numbers said we needed to add an infiltration system. So we, we added something small behind the building. And then we added one inside the loop, sort of in the center of the screen, above where the walks all come together. And, and that's certainly right there, we added an infiltration trench just to promote. You know, that's the one place where it's, where water could pond close to homes. And again, with the higher numbers, we wanted to ensure that stormwater stays lower. So while there's an overflow that would flow between the buildings, such as in the frozen ground situation or model, we added a pipe so that according to the non-frozen ground conditions, water never ponds in that area. But felt like it was belts and suspenders. So that's really the stormwater side of things. And I'll let, if there's anything I forgot, Jim, that we talked about.
I, I think that was it. I mean, the only other thing that I had in my notes was, you know, we better define some of the flow paths to basins.
Yeah, one of the comments BSC made, there was some pretty long flat reaches. And there still are some long and flat reaches, but they're not as severe by any means as they were before. So in particular, over on the west side of the site, sort of where the access, alternate emergency access goes out, yeah, through there, we steepened that up a little bit. We did it in a few other places too, over by the existing store, sorry, the existing irrigation pond. And that behind those units, the air, those, those yards or that area was steepened a little bit to better direct water and make it clear that water will move away from the buildings. I think generally speaking, those were the, those were the big, big items related to stormwater.
Okay.
And then I can just run through some of the other plan changes that took place. So obviously, one of the big things that Steve mentioned is that they finally came to an agreement with the church on the, on the easement. So there will no longer be a sewage treatment plant on site. It'll be, it'll be sewed and, and a pump station will be there to provide a sewage flow across country that'll run through, reservoir drive will provide laterals for the, for the homeowners on reservoir drive. If they wish to tie in, they don't have to, but will be there available if, if they wanted to.
Okay.
And then so the cross country sewer will run through the church and tie into a, an existing sewer manhole in Pine Acres Drive.
Okay. Speaking of reservoir room, you know, it's a small town.
Right.
The term betterment fee have been thrown around and thrown around. There will be no betterment fees here, correct? There is no need for any of the residents to incur a betterment fee by having sewer brought to the edge of their property. Is that my understanding?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
The developer will, will be paid for that lot. So there'll be no, no reason for a betterment to be charged to that. We're paying for the whole thing.
Okay. And at that point, once it reaches the edge of their property, if they choose to hook up from their property to their baseline, I assume is their responsibility?
Yes, from the edge of their property to their home is their responsibility, yes.
Okay. And we've also had some discussion about bringing gas to that street. I know Jim had talked about it at one point. Is that a realistic possibility for the neighbors?
It's a possibility, but I, I have to say that the gas company is extremely difficult. And other projects, they have not come through. I don't understand the processes, but there is a, a general trend within the, I'd say the whole country of coming away from fossil fuels. So we're starting to see another generation of heat pumps being installed. We've got a project, a multifamily project going to another town that we have gas readily available right there, but we are putting electric heat pumps. So the gas is, is up in the air. Whether we put gas on the site or not, whether the gas company cooperates and they do it on a timely fashion or sometimes we put a request in, we don't hear from them for a long time.
So I, I suspect that may be something neighbors may be looking for. I'll address that in a second. What gas company is it, Liberty or someone else?
It's Bay State and, which is Columbia, which is Eversource.
Okay, so it's on the, okay, thank you. But I, I do think some of the neighbors may be interested in that, since we're tearing this, you know, since the street will be altered.
Again, that would be up to the gas company, they can certainly request gas.
Okay.
So we, we really don't have any say in that.
Okay.
If we did, certainly we would provide it, but it's not.
So right now, you don't plan to provide natural gas to these zones?
No, I didn't say that. I just said, I don't know how the gas companies are going to cooperate.
Okay.
Whether they're going to bring gas across site or not.
Okay.
They haven't said that.
Okay.
So i- if, if they're able to do it and runs through our site, certainly they have, we have no problem with the running through the residential street if it's outside already.
So I think then, and I certainly don't want to put words in there, it's fair to assume if it is determined the gas will be brought to your property, most likely it will run down.
You know, I, I think the gas is on locust.
It is, it's, it's on locust, but it's not in front of the site. It's a few, several hundred feet or a few hundred feet down the road.
Okay.
We've tried to contact the gas company as well and haven't gotten response. So that, that I believe is the closest location in locusts and locusts.
So what I would say to that is if, if we bring the gas into our site, then we have no problem with running it through our site to service any of our bodies.
Fine.
If we don't have gas on site.
I, I, that I understand.
Then it just don't happen.
I under, I understand.
I will cooperate and be a good neighbor.
Okay. That brings me to a question I was gonna hold off on later. Have you had an opportunity to sit down with the neighbors? And listen to their concerns other than at this meeting?
I spoke to a couple of neighbors here at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And I've made myself available at the end of the night. And I'm certainly willing to do that if any neighbors would like to.
Okay.
They could get my number from the town planner and I'm, I'm no problem meeting with.
What we may want to do is see perhaps if we could have like a local meeting with the neighbors where you could show up and, you know, listen to their concerns.
Okay.
If that is viable.
Apparently viable for me, yes.
Okay, so we'll, you know, see if we're gonna accommodate that over, you know, this process. What else has changed?
So, so there's a few other things that we addressed that, or came up at some of the hearings. We, we actually removed two units from the plan to reduce the density. So that's, that's now shown on the, on the revised plans. We also, zoom up on this. We also looked at the parking lot at the entrance, the existing parking lots that we were basically reconstructing. At the entrance, I know the butter to the north there was concerned about the close proximity to the, to his property. So we're already, we were already pulling it away from where it is today. The gravel parking lot is basically right on the property line. So we're, we, we had it pulled away about twenty-five feet or so from the property line. We pulled it away even further now, another ten feet. We realigned the entire driveway at the entrance. We tightened up the radius as we talked about at the previous hearing. So we did pull the parking lot away. What that does is it provides room for additional landscaping, which we showed on the plan. We had another layer of evergreen plantings there. And that also acts as a buffer to the slope behind it.
Okay.
So there's, there's plenty of room there now. Let me, we just go to the landscape plans quickly.
What one is in?
It's L, it's the L series, it starts, I believe, at L one hundred.
That's the parking lot right next to the clubhouse. And my opinion is that that park lot will probably be used less in the future with this plan than it's been present.
Okay.
It's right after the negotiations.
So you, you're basically surrounded on two sides with additional shrub, additional vegetation, correct? Behind it and going over to Locust Street?
Yes, yeah, we, we have a buffer for the entire parking lot from, from Locust Street. And then you can, if you can see on the screen, but along the property line, we added another row of, of evergreen plantings. We had some shady trees for the parking lot in front. And then as a backdrop to that, we added some additional landscaping there as well. And then I know there was concern on the other end of the property to the, to the west along the property line. We added about thirty percent more evergreen plantings along that property line. We already had a buffer there before.
Is that going through Squier, Squier Lane and reservoir?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So as I mentioned, we had, we already had a buffer there before. I know some of the concerns of the previous hearings was, you know, visibility into the site. So we did add, add additional plantings there, said about thirty percent just along that property line. And then we added more evergreen plantings along the sewer pump station as well.
Okay.
And we provided a stockade fence as additional screening beyond that. So, so you know, a significant increase in landscaping along, along those areas of concern.
All right.
Yeah, and the, and the pumps, pump station's gonna be underground. It's actually very deep underground, so the noise and.
There's not much visibility there.
Yeah, you're not gonna see it.
For future meetings, I know some of the neighbors had some concerns. Is it possible to get a rendering, what that will look like?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can provide a rendering or.
Like a, like a three D, so you say majority initially underground.
Right.
Containing noise and, you know.
Correct, yeah.
I know that was a concern, some of the residents had.
Right, sure.
Especially when we're talking specifically about children. But still with the pump station, I'm sure the neighbors are gonna want to make sure it blends in as best they can.
Yeah, we do that. And then there was some, some other smaller items. We removed the dog park from, from the plans. I know it was more of a concern for conservation. It was located along the southern portion of the site. So they were concerned about the location, we just.
And runoff, I assume.
Yeah, we just removed it from the site altogether. We also designated areas for, presented at this point, for trash removal and recycling. So the existing maintenance facility is gonna remain. There's some, you know, small stockpile areas there now for, you know, sand and material like that. So we thought that that would be a good location for the, for the dumpsters and recycling locations kind of away from, from the units. And it's, and it's an area that's already disturbed. So it's, it's located just to the north of the, of the maintenance facility now.
And will, will those be fenced in and in?
I'm sorry.
Will those be screened?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be enclosure around those as well. That's enclosure.
All right.
Let's see, what else? The, along reservoir drive, I know there was concerns about access. We added a, a gate on both ends of, of that access drive, one at the end of reservoir drive and one internal to the site. So there is, you know, an emergency gate there that the fire department and other first responders will have access to that they can, you know, open that when they need to in an emergency.
All right, so. It has been referenced from the beginning, but a lot of people think this is a secondary means of access.
It is not.
It is not.
It's not.
It is simply an emergency access to the facility.
That is correct.
For police and fire, most likely fire.
Right.
Having double gated, the neighbors had some concern about whose responsibility is it to plow up to the gate and beyond the gate? I assume you'll open the gate and you do your plowing. So it is clear access during after storms.
Yeah, and it has to, it has to be maintained during snowstorms, yes, yeah.
And keys will be provided to whom?
First responders, fire department, police department, whoever, whoever in town needs a TPW, whatever reason needs them.
Okay.
They will have a piece, providing for whoever requests them within the town.
Okay. That, Mr. Chairman, could you go over on the, on the plans? I see one gate towards the main area, but where on the plans is that second gate?
So there's, there's one located here at the end of reservoir and then the other one is.
What page are you looking at?
Yeah.
And I'm looking, L one oh four?
L one oh four, it's on, it's on the four series sheets, which is.
I'm just looking for that second gate that, I see the first gate, but I don't see the second gate on the plan.
If you look at, I think probably sheet one oh four, it might be a little more clear. There's probably, you're on that one?
I'm on that one.
All right. So there's one, there's one here at the end of reservoir drive and then there's another one here at the other end of that emergency access drive internal to the.
So is there one by, so the one by reservoir?
It's right here.
Oh, Phil, if you look at the circle in the middle.
Yeah, I get that.
Go to your left. You cross the street, there's a gate right there. Follow the line going across.
What's expecting here?
Right there is the first gate.
Yep, circle down, but I'm looking for one here, right, right there. Okay, all right. Correct. Yep, I, I see the smoothly line and I see one straight line, I guess. Thank you for pointing it out.
So the, the second one is closer to your units.
Yes.
Actually between, almost between two of you, triplexes.
Right there, it's called out as a gate right there. The other one's right here.
Yeah, I see the main one, okay. Is, okay, is the gate outside of the site?
The one on reservoir is, it, it's, it's right at the end of the right of way, the reservoir.
It's up on the little land.
Yeah.
It's on a toll system. And then within a final decision, the, rather the emergency egress will be well defined and articulated.
Correct.
To address any concerns the neighbors may have that can be broken through at some point. I apologize, any, any other?
Just a couple of minor things. It was concerned about bus, bus access to the site. So towards the end of the plan set, we had a, an exhibit for truck turning movements.
Isn't that one oh two?
That's, it's one of the exhibits at the end of the plan set.
Yeah. He actually.
Yeah, yep. So this plan right here shows buses coming into the site, accessing the parking lot and then maneuvering and, and leaving the site.
So they're not driving through the whole.
They're not driving through the whole.
There's one location for kids.
Correct.
Okay. Now, down the road, I assume if anyone, this is approved, you may have to look at an internal policy, so parents aren't just sitting there parking, waiting for the bus to show up, you know, with their kids.
Right, we don't anticipate a lot of kids at the city, if any.
All right.
We're all two bedroom units.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
And then the last, the last comment or one of the comments from peer review was how we got to the calculation for open space. You had eighty percent of the site remaining open post-construction. So we provided a graphic or an exhibit plan of, of how we got to that number with the different surface treatments, existing buildings, proposed buildings, existing pavement, proposed pavement. And that sheet EX one oh three shows the green space as remaining open space language is greater than eighty percent of the site.
Okay.
So I think those were the main changes to the plans, other than adding more information and more detail. Again, as Jim mentioned, you know, we're, we're waiting for peer review comments and we'll, we'll respond to those when we get them.
What I'd like to do now is ask, ask any additional questions, none at this time.
On anything regarding?
Yes.
Yes, all right, I, I have a few questions. I guess the first thing, the open space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you count your stormwater structures as open space?
No, it's, it's, it's basically anything that is not impervious surface. So the, the buildings.
Okay.
The event, essentially.
All right. Um.
We didn't count the pond, the existing ponds, that's the lines.
I got you, that works. Um, then, I know you said you added an infiltration system behind the clubhouse. So that's an underground, like dry well system. Where are the inlets to that? Like, how is, how's water getting in there?
Mike, you wanna take that? You still there?
Yeah, I'm here. There's a, we added an area drain. There's actually a small area drain there that didn't show up on the survey when we walked the site again. There's some, there's probably a small dry well there today. I didn't open the structure, but there is a graded structure. We have a photo of it as well as having seen it. Um, so there's clearly, you know, it's a low spot, it, yeah, just past the gym.
Yeah, I know.
Load of response.
Being on the gym.
Sorry. So.
There you go.
Yeah, there's a small inlet right about where I show area drain, and I forget what number I gave it, but, um. Yeah, right there. Um, there's presently, I believe, a dry well there, but what we did was we sized the small infiltration system. And again, this was a function of having run the Cornell numbers, there, there, the overflow is sort of a natural spillway that would dump out. And you can sort of see it just to the right of the arrow, Jim, if you read the contours, yeah, we're just up above that. There's, yeah, right in there, in the wooded, just to the right a bit. Um, water would wanna pond up and go over, but because the model, um. Fit back a number that increased runoff from this part of the site, we added that fairly sizable exfiltration system. And it was sized as large as it was because we wanted it to stay contained for the hundred year and not flooded to the building. Again, the numbers say it could, you know, it, it seems unlikely, given the soil conditions, and we're running again, we're using an eight point two seven. Inch per hour rate, which is the highest rate allowed by Mass DEP. Realistically, the soil is probably a lot better than that, but, um, and that's probably why you don't see flooding in that area today. There's one there, and then there's one in the inner loop, which again is just a little trench. Um, not, not a bed in stone, yeah, you're gonna see it on the sheet. Just, just off of the sheet, um, to the left.
This is slow, sorry.
All right, I mean, that all makes sense, so.
Right, yes, right, yeah.
The, um. So that dry well behind the clubhouse, it's really just collecting that low point, some of the paved and impervious area.
Right, it's really that, the clubhouse has doors in the back for the lower level. It's the water that would run down that little bit of paved walkway there. It's a very small, isolated, you know, small runoff, uh, tributary area. The parking lot is, the parking lot is not directed to it, is, is the short answer.
And then actually, just speaking of dry wells, is that a waiver through us? That was, is that a request for dry, no dry wells for the, the units? Is that, that come on?
Are you talking about the rooftop?
Rooftop infiltration.
Yeah, this, this came up last night as well, and I, I believe it would be a waiver request. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the stormwater permit is through the planning board and not conservation, so I believe a waiver would be through this board.
Okay.
That's my understanding anyway.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, so.
Well, we will have to provide a, a waiver list to the board.
Okay, we can discuss that later, too. I just wanted to bring it up, since I didn't think I saw anything on here, um. I think that was it. Oh, actually, one other thing that I was thinking about when I was looking at this. So where your mailboxes are, how large is that, that turnoff area?
Mentioned about, um. We made it, we made it, uh, ten or twelve feet wide and then at least twenty feet long.
Slow enough to accommodate.
Yeah.
Vehicles.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, um, how many units do you have in total?
One oh eight now.
One oh eight, all right. So I think there's a pretty good chance that you're gonna have times where there's gonna be multiple cars. You know, probably coming back from work to grab a hail. So one thought that I had potentially to alleviate that is. Maybe instead of doing the turnoff, actually put a few parking spaces in there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that way you can accommodate more than two, maybe, you know, five or six cars.
Right.
In a turnoff area. I think you have, it looks like you have plenty of room over there, and I think that might be a simple.
Yeah.
So.
I do live in a hundred unit development myself.
Yep.
I've never seen more than two guys there, getting there, just my own personal experience.
I know, like, um, is it high ridge? It's on Lake Street, you see, I don't know how many units are up there. I think it's less than this, but. You see, you know, when it, when people are coming back from work, there's three, four cars there sometimes, just parked on the side. So it just might be a good idea, especially if the male, man, male woman's there.
Yeah.
You know, there, if it's one hundred or over a hundred units, you know, they'll probably be.
Right.
There for a little while, so it might just be good.
Yeah.
And.
Can I ask a question again? How close is that to the dumpster?
The mailboxes? I don't think they're.
That is not really close proximity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought they were, you know, it could be over that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's probably a couple hundred feet, maybe three hundred feet.
Okay, and I guess the only other thing regarding that is, this is still plenty of fifty-five plus communities?
It's not.
It's not anymore, okay.
No, it never was.
It never was, okay, never mind, I take that back. I was gonna say, make it, make, no, I was gonna say, make the access to the mailboxes ADA acceptable.
That was.
Accessible, accessible.
Well, one of the comments that peer review had was, um, you know, the walking path where they terminate with the roadways to make them accessible, which we did on the realized plan, that's.
Okay.
Another current plan.
Perfect, all right.
Woods?
I just have one question about the access road. For those units that are sort of end up behind the gate. Could they walk on the, you know, vegetation and use it somehow without a vehicle? And should we be concerned about that? I guess more like ride a bike on it or?
On the, on the emergency vehicle access.
Right, right, you see all those units, they kind of end up.
Right.
Their backyard is behind the gate, so to speak.
Right, yeah, they, I mean, they, we have, uh, walking trails throughout the site, and it actually crosses. That emergency vehicle access right there, so that's certainly one way they can get on it. They can certainly walk. You know, either along the driveway to get there, or behind their units over the long area to get there if they wanted to.
I just wasn't sure if that would be problematic, because it's supposed to be.
Oh, because it's emergency, yeah.
I mean, the chances of it.
Right.
Needing to be used, but if people are using it recreationally, is that a problem, I guess?
I mean, to me, it's, it's, it's like no, no other road. It's no different than any other road in town. It's actually, you know, probably less. Certainly be used less often, and then it probably never be used, honestly, hopefully. The only way it would be used is if there's an emergency internal to the site, and yet the main access drive is blocked.
Sure, okay.
As of that happening.
Thank you.
There's, um, where it says clubhouse, beside that, it says foundation only, that existing already?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not it.
Phil can probably address that, but I think that was, was put there for future expansion for, um, you know, uh. A banquet facility or something like that. I think that was the intent in the past, I don't know.
But it's not a deep foundation, it's just a.
It's a flat foundation.
Oh, it's slab foundation?
It's a full foundation.
Yeah, there's nothing on top of it, I think there's.
So it's open though?
It's open.
So you could fall in?
No, 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 I think there's crushed.
There's crushed, yeah, right.
All right. Thank you.
Um, traffic has been a big concern, and when we spoke about scaling back our goals to get to neutral traffic. Has that been accomplished by reducing what you've done so far?
I, I don't know if, uh, I asked the, the traffic consultant to join, I'm not sure if she's on the call.
Um, I'm actually on the call, yeah, Kirsten Braun, the traffic engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. Um, so we did take a look at the reduction in units, and of course, if you reduce any number of units, you're gonna have, um, a lesser of, of a traffic impact. Um, it won't necessarily be net neutral, but I think the largest thing to point out here is that we did collect this traffic data. Um, back in September of twenty twenty, which means all the movements that were entering the existing golf course or leaving the existing golf course. Um, so likely those numbers anyway were impacted by this pandemic. Um, so really, ultimately, I'm sure if we counted now, um, those numbers would be much higher. Uh, I'm sure that the impact between the residential development and the golf course, um, is probably gonna be, you know, as you would say, net neutral there. Um, just because of the fact that our counts, and there was no way to adjust them, um, to pre-pandemic conditions. Because ITE, which is what we usually use to estimate trips, um, doesn't actually have a land use, um, for this, this size golf course. Um, so ultimately, though, I mean, the, the largest thing to point out here is that, you know, our, our counts, which is what we use to sort of estimate the change in traffic. Were taken during the pandemic, and were likely much lower than what it actually does generate now. Um, so I would suspect that this is more or less a net neutral type of project here, um, replacing the golf course with this residential development.
Okay. Uh, Jim, is that something we'll have our peer review look at?
Yeah, so BSC has touched on a little bit, uh, we could certainly get an updated look at it, though. I'm sure Frank and, uh, his associates could take another peek at it.
Cause that's one thing I think, um, you know, the neighbors have some concern about to try to make it as neutral as we can.
Uh, this is Kirsten, this is Kirsten Braun again with Ron Mueller Associates. Um, I believe at our last meeting, actually, in, I think July was the last time I joined you guys, uh. We did talk, I, the peer reviewer was on then, and one of the things when I gave my introductory, introductory, um. You know, summary of our, our study was, one of the things was that I did mention that our counts were affected by COVID. Um, specifically the driveway counts and, and what kind of traffic the golf course was generating. And I believe the peer reviewer did agree with those findings, um, at that last meeting in July, that, that really, you know, it's. A residential development isn't necessarily gonna generate more traffic than a golf course. Um, I do believe Bongay Brook has like a res, has a restaurant in it too, which was obviously impacted last September by COVID. Um, so I think the peer reviewer in our last meeting did, did agree with those findings, um, but again, that was three months ago, so.
I can, I can certainly ask up, uh, traffic guy Mike Santos to take a look at this and, and review it again and, and provide some comments.
Cause you know, uh, that's a concern of the neighbors. I know we cannot, um. Change the structure of Locust Street itself. I understand you've, uh, made some corrections on sightlines when you planted.
Yeah. Kirsten, we studied, Kirsten, did we study those areas for the?
Uh. Oh, for sightlines? Yeah, in our original study, we always, whenever we look at a development, we specifically look at sightlines out there. Um, assuming the existed, the removal of some existing vegetation that was overgrown on, on our property. We should be able to meet the minimum sightline requirements to allow safe operation here.
Okay, I, I think the neighbors may have some additional concerns in regards to that. Any other questions from the board? I'd like to turn our first anyone in the room with any questions?
Yeah, hi. Hi, Chris Bay, J two Reservoir Drive. Is that a question about the sewer? I think you guys mentioned before that if it was a private, uh, sewer that would not be able to hook up, but the tower had to take over. Am I correct? Is, has that been decided? So, can we hook up? You can hook up if you want to, you don't have to.
We're, we're installing a line to facilitate that, it's true, it's true.
Okay, and would we have to hook up immediately, or is that something we could do in?
There'll be a stub there, I believe, sir.
Yeah.
There'll be no better entrance, so you, you can hook up. And now or, or down the road, or a future.
All right, so there's no issue, cause I know it was brought up, and you know.
We're installing a stub.
Yeah.
And then from there on, it's between you and the sewer department. We're really out of it, but there's a stub there available for you.
Okay, but there's no, cause I know a lot of times it's you have this amount of time to hook up, it's not, we could hook up at any time we wanted.
That would be due to the sewer department, and I believe that would be the case, before we get a call.
Okay.
That's our understanding as well, sir.
All right.
The stub is there, it's permanent stub.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Walter Callan in on Reservoir Drive, actually, neighbors, the press here. Uh, in terms of, uh, digging up the street from sewers, uh, obviously, that could be a major disruption to the neighborhood. Particularly for those on Reservoir Drive. I guess the question I have is, uh, approximately, how long would you predict that would be happening for this construction? Secondly, um, you know, obviously you're gonna be bringing in every equipment, as well as, uh, the associated piping and whatever. Other materials you're gonna need to accomplish that, and, uh, you know, where are you gonna store that material? Over the course of the construction? Okay, end up in our yards, or, uh, are you gonna have a staging area off-site? Uh, also, as far as the paving of the road, um, when you dig the trench to bury the sewers. Are you just going to pave over the trench, or is the street going to be fully paved, uh, once that construction is completed? Um, so those are basically some of my immediate questions. Ongoing in terms of crossing, uh, Lake Street in order to gain access through the church's property. Which obviously is necessary for the sewers to be hooked up properly. Uh, is there gonna be a separate hearing for that particular, uh, construction? Or is that all tied in with this project right now?
Jim could probably answer that.
Yeah, I guess, uh, so the, the sewer line itself wouldn't have a separate hearing for the planning board. However, if it crosses jurisdictional areas for conservation, it certainly will have a hearing. And, uh, just, I, I recall looking at the conceptual plan, there's several jurisdictional areas. So there very likely will be a, a hearing with the conservation commission in terms of, uh, that. Um, and in, in terms of, uh, construction management for the sewer, uh, given that this is, uh, in this process, in this hearing. Uh, the applicant is going to have to provide, um, now that he has agreement for sewer. Construction management plan for the sewer line as well as the site. Uh, things like where stockpiling will take place should be identified. Um, you know, luckily, they have a very large site, uh, that abuts this, uh, road, so they, they have plenty of, of area to maintain. They just have to demonstrate on their, on their plans, things like hours of construction, when they're gonna arrive. All that stuff should be provided to the board. Um, and in terms of paving, uh, you know, certainly, I, I believe the, the board has discussed, uh, this. And it certainly would be a condition to pave, uh, curb to curb on Reservoir Drive, not just the patch, as you. As Walter, as you probably know, driving around town, any kind of, um, patchwork for these, uh, these sewer lines or water lines. Don't end up being flush, uh, so we'd certainly want it to be, uh, curb to curb.
And so that will be part of the conditions. And this is, this will, that will be part of the conditions, construction management, if anyone is. Everything onsite, offsite, storage of materials, storage of equipment, time of operation. Stuff he's, I'm sure, very familiar with already, and they're doing another project in town, another project. Anything else, sir?
I have a moment, no.
Okay, anyone from the public, can we?
I can, I can elaborate a few more questions as you brought up, but.
Sure.
Uh, what we're installing in Reservoir is, is a four inch line, it's very small. So we would have no reason to stockpile any material on Reservoir Street. And, uh, as far as timeframe, I, I'm guessing that, that would be weeks, not even months, so to have that worked out. And, like you said, we'll be patching that road, and then we'll be doing overlay, and I view Reservoir Street, it has. It, it's, uh, it's at the end of its useful life, so, uh, Reservoir Street will be getting brand new surface, which is a major benefit to the owners.
Does that include sidewalks? Are you gonna do?
We're not gonna do the sidewalks.
The sidewalks are pretty bad, you know. I mean, I mow the sidewalks, that's not bad.
Okay.
So, you know, that's like the running joke on the street.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, in fact, we had a tree come down on my neighbor's yard, fell onto the road. When the, when the town came to clean it up, it really damaged out part of the sidewalk. It's damaged now. But anyway, I mean, that's obviously coupled with the fact that they're in poor shape to begin with.
Anyone in the public?
Jim? Thank you. So in terms of sidewalk, thank, thank you for bringing that up because I, I know the board had the question of whether or not to allow for sidewalks or not in the site. And we've had a lot of conversations with the safety officers and our peer review engineers and what have you, and the applicant. And I, I know I've had conversation with the applicant, I just wanted to get a sense of the board of allowing for this to continue on as designed, where it doesn't have sidewalks interior to the site, but however, the applicant could pay in lieu of and contribute to sidewalks here in town. Obviously, you know, this is a smaller private neighborhood that may not need necessarily sidewalks, it's self-contained, again, it's private, where much like reservoir drive perhaps could use an overlay and many other areas in South Bellingham that could certainly use sidewalks that would be heavily utilized by the general public. I think maybe a condition that provides, you know, a payment in lieu of could certainly be something that the board could consider. I know I provided the applicant with a rough cost from DPW as to what it would be for the town to run the, the linear feat of sidewalk that was proposed in this site. And, and so, you know, that's just a starting off point. Obviously, that number is significantly higher than what a private developer would pay as the town would be paying prevailing wage. So that's, that's just something to consider moving forward. A couple other small things real quick, if I may. There was talks about direct infiltrators. You're right, there would need to be a waiver, that's typical, that's a typical standard for the town, direct infiltration from the roof runoff. However, this site is, you know, have sandy material. The Board of Health has reviewed the soil conditions. They are using the Cornell method, which is a significant, very conservative method. And it's not necessarily within our planning board stormwater management regulation, but it, since we're doing concurrently with conservation, that's in their local wetland bylaw. The gate at the, the emergency access, if, I may recommend moving it on to the property line, just for maintenance purposes, but that's certainly, I'm sure it could be discussed further. And just lastly, the garbage. I know it's, it's not a very sexy topic, but it's, it's a very practical topic and it's a lot of units here for, I think, one dumpster there. I know there was concerns at some of the other sites that are similar to this of not a lack of, or a lack of trash receptacles. Obviously, with lack of trash receptacles, trash gets stored all around and then blows in the wind. So maybe just considering a little bit more in terms of the detail of that and whether or not you, we want to add a second dumpster or, or a larger one or what have you. That's all.
I was going to mention that, Jim, with, do they have the option for curbside trash pickup and curbside recycling?
That's not, that's, if Jim wants to address that, or are you trying?
No, that's quite all right, you can go for it.
I know on the other development we did in town, we had one, one, one major dumpster. So.
Yeah, it did. Not enough.
Was it?
Yeah.
So we're, we're a man of the, whatever's necessary. We're not, we don't want to skip by one dumpster for six to.
Absolutely. Children, neighbors will agree with that.
We're on the same page.
All right. If you have something wrong with.
To expand that as necessary.
Yes.
We'll look at that some more.
Okay. Anyone else in the public have any questions?
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
There was a comment made earlier in terms of not having many children in this complex. I'd like to know what, how your answer, what, what did you study or analyze for you to pump that out?
Well, we've done another development in town, similar styles units, 36 units, and we have, we have zero children.
So that's 36 units.
Right, so if you multiply zero times four, it's still zero. But we're not expecting many. We don't control that process. This is just our private experience.
One thing on this one too, we have a bunch of units that's going to be a first floor master. And so we're going to be looking for like, you know, probably the 55 and older, even that's not 55 and older, in, in this, in this development. Half of the units has a first floor master.
So, so one of the things, so just like my partner, we all said, we, we, our target market is 055 people and, and then our other 50% of our target is new, newly married households that are just starting out. A condominium development, even though we have a lot of open space, we have a lot of very attractive walking trails, this is typically not the type of development that families would be attracted to. They're generally attracted to single-family homes on single-family lots with their own backyards. But that, we can't sit here and guarantee anything's going to happen, but based on past experience, that's what we find.
Okay. So to address your question about children, I think they're planning ahead and if you want to come over or they can bring it up, can you show them the cut for the turn-in for the school buses? So although they don't think they'll have many children, they've already planned for a, a sheet showing a turnaround radius to the event school buses. So while they're not saying no, they've built that in.
Yeah, I'm just curious what their answer was predicated on.
Best experience. Any other questions, anyone here?
I have one thing, just previous comments. You said that you're installing a four-inch sewer main reservoir.
Yes.
Four inches?
Yes.
Is that what the sewer department says?
Yes.
Okay. That seems small, very small.
That's a forced main, that's on a gravel.
Oh, it's a forced main? Okay, all right, never mind, okay. That, that explains everything.
One last comment from me. I know in our last meetings, we had a lot of talk about the golf course and retention finding that are right there right now. And being a risk manager all my life, I was concerned with the safety of fencing those in. I've seen what you were saying, but having it remain natural, so I'm comfortable with it. It's been there a long time. The golf course has never anything happened. So that has alleviated my concerns from a risk management standpoint.
We appreciate that. I bet, actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I wanted to also bring up the fencing requirement around the infiltration basins. And I know there is provision in the bylaw that if it holds less than a certain amount of water, you can have other options besides fencing, hedging, vegetation, things like that. I think we have one, one infiltration basin that is over, I think the two and a half feet of standing water, and I think it's 100-year storm. So that would be another waiver we would be requesting is to not have fences around those basins. And we had this conversation again with conservation last night, they prefer not to have fences either. So I just wanted to bring that up.
If I'm not mistaken, I might have been a long haul up here.
Okay. And again, we described this before, these are not your typical, you know, deep retention bases that hold water. There's, there's probably 25 feet of sand out here, so.
These detention basins are going to look like open fields with shallow sides on it. And fencing would just change the character.
I appreciate that and understanding.
And once you get beyond, you know, a certain distance behind the units, we're changing the seed mix to be a meadow mix, so.
So higher.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes. On the existing farm, irrigation farm.
Yeah.
There's a shelf there. It's only like 18 inches of water, avoid five or six feet, and then it's off.
Okay.
Built like that in case somebody did throw that, they run shower water, it's not deep right from the wall.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I have one more.
Certainly.
Feel free to cut me off at any time.
No, no.
So as far as access to the basins, I think we did discuss it before. First of all, on the record too, I, as far as fencing goes, I think, no. I, I agree with you. And I see what you're doing where it's going to be more of a meadow. So when it comes time to, once the something for this, this, the development is built, the plan is, is to really try and leave the basins and everything around the basins natural, kind of just let it do its thing, correct? So for, I know DEP does require 10-foot access around the basins. You have plenty of access because it's all shallow and flat. But one thing that I would recommend, and maybe this can be in your construction management plan, is to make sure that you have a 10-foot mowed access around the basins for monitoring during construction, because I imagine, I know you're putting in water quality units, right? So, I mean, there is a chance that you might get a slug of sediment, something in there, and you want that out of there to make sure that it doesn't find up any infiltration. So, I mean, when it comes time that everything's built, I don't, I don't think you would need to keep a 10-foot access mode around at that point. But during construction, I would just say that should be something that should be done, just so you can monitor in the most case.
That meadow mix would be mowed probably once a year anyway. So at that point, they could do the maintenance to the basins if they need to get in there.
Absolutely. So I think just during construction, it would make sense to keep, just keep that access there at all times and then let it go once, once you're done.
Yeah.
One question.
Mr. Chairman, this is Frank DiPietro. If I could just offer a few comments?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. So again, I've gone through a preliminary review, it's not final. A number of the comments we have made in our previous peer review that have been addressed, I'm going through and verifying that some of the others have been addressed. A lot of my comments have already been noted. Again, I think there are a number of waivers and I think it would be handy to have a list and review that list to make sure that whether it's conservation or planning board, that gets taken a look at real carefully. Again, I think I, there are comments that I think were going to coming in from other town agencies. I saw this afternoon, a, some comments from Don DiMartino, which I think I agree with. A couple of things that haven't been mentioned, however, and on the, I believe it's the layout materials plans and James and Michael, please correct me, there are snow storage areas shown. And I know these are more conceptual than reality, but they're awful small looking for some of the areas. And again, I'm just thinking that it might be worthwhile to have a little more thought about where they're going to plow the snow. I, I think, yeah, there they are. So if you go to maybe one of the little cul-de-sac things, so you can sort of see them along the edge of the, go ahead, you can take over the plan and show them.
It's, it's the 100 series plans.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can, I'll start with this one.
So the little crosshatch areas, if you're looking at cul-de-sacs or whatever, those are the proposed snow storage areas. The same thing, yeah, along there, there's some, again, looking at the area, and I joked last night at conservation that, I know global warming will limit our snow in the future, probably not likely, but these appear to be relatively small areas to store snow from, example, from that cul-de-sac we're looking at now. I think it would be handy for the applicant to take a look at that and maybe either have a more general plan or, you know, have other areas that it could be expanded upon, just to make sure that if you've got six inches of snow, for example, you have a place to put that someplace. And would that be in the area that I think a snowplow would, would easily get you to put the material? I think Don DiMartino brought this up. On the utility plan, they show the water and sewer and the sewer line, because they're going from one side of the site to the other, to the pump station, gets pretty deep, it's some cases 11 or 12 feet below the grade. But there are a number of crossings of the water and sewer line, and there are standards, the state has standards about maintaining distances, concrete encasement, vertical and horizontal separation. I think that's something that the applicant should probably take a look at. Don did have some comments in his thing that I think made sense.
Have you received any comments?
Yeah, we actually started.
I know it's late today.
Yeah, we have. We started, we actually started looking at it.
I apologize for that. I just want to make sure, give it up to Stephen.
Where, where?
Thank you.
And then the only other mention is right along the parking lot we're looking at right now, next to Mr. Rhodes' property, they're actually proposing a little bit of an earthen berm, maybe a foot or so higher. So that's going to provide a little bit of, right along the property, where that wetland is. It's just going to provide an additional sort of barrier for vehicles and maybe a little bit of raised area for some of the planning to put him over there. I think that's a good idea overall. And I'm a civil engineer, not a landscape architect, so have to watch out for those types of comments.
Truly noted.
I'll have more details later on, but again, those are the comments that have not been mentioned already during tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, you, you had the last question.
What, what is the advantage of having the emergency gate off-site versus on-site?
We just didn't want to have vehicles parked there. We didn't want to allow room for vehicles to park beyond the cul-de-sac bowl and before the gate. That's, we wanted, we didn't want to have any room for vehicles to park and block that driveway open.
They want to keep it in since the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Okay.
That was the intent. I appreciate Jim's comment of moving that onto, you know, the local's property. We'll, we'll put it wherever, wherever makes sense.
And getting back to Frank's comments about the snow storage, just looking at the layout, I'm assuming the emergency access road, it's not a lot of snow, pretty close to what you, you mean 75% of your whole, 50% of your square footage of the redway? That's a long river.
Yeah. It, it'll have snow and it'll be plowed and maintained and.
And you don't feel enough area for snow?
Yeah, we didn't show snow storage along the driveway internal to the site because it's going to be plowed like every other street in town where it's just off the side of the road. So we didn't, you know, just for plan clarity sake, we didn't show those snow storage areas everywhere. And I appreciate what Frank is saying, you know, we'll expand the areas where we can on the cul-de-sacs. We also didn't want to block line of sites at the intersections. But I think what we'll probably end up doing is designating a larger area, you know, in one location that if the snowfall is bigger than the capacity for the areas that we're showing on the plan, they can move it to that other area and store it. So we'll, we'll show that on the revised plans.
That's appreciated. Anything else? Jim, it looks like we have some homework to do here. What's the best time for the next meeting? Bear in mind, we only have one meeting in November. Are we looking at a continuance to the first meeting in December?
So your meeting in November is the 18th, correct? That's, that's the third Thursday of the month. I think, I don't want to speak for Frank, but I, I think that's plenty of time for them to, to get a response back and, and have Jim and his team make any amendments that are necessary for the plan. So you should, you should have a fairly robust set of plans and responses by the November 18th meeting, I would imagine.
All right. So we'll need a motion for continuance.
I'll need to continue the hearing until November 18th.
Motion to Florida continues the public hearing till November 18th, which is the third Thursday of the month. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion passed. Anything else, Jim? On this?
Not for this one, no.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Those. Appreciate all the applicant people here.
Thank you.
For showing up. And so on the agenda, new general business is asphalt engineering decision. Jim, can you bring us up to speed? I know we've had some documents and drafts floating around. Can you let us know, there was a change this afternoon. Can you just give a overview of what the changes from earlier today to this afternoon are?
Yep. So, so at the last meeting, the board had requested that I draft a favorable decision with the conditions that have been discussed to date at the, at the public hearings. You did receive a draft of those decisions, I believe, Monday, and since that time, I have received some comments back, and I've incorporated those comments. Really, you know, these two decisions you have before you are much of the same, you know, just having different rationales for those, those permits. But ultimately, the, the adjustments here are somewhat clerical. For instance, I'll give you an example. I switched it from fifteen square feet to acres. So obviously asphalt engineering is not working off of fifteen square feet. That would be impressive. And then things like on determination number three, I was X lines spelled crashing instead of crushing. So that's, that's been corrected. I appreciate those who've, who've spotted some of those small things. And then substantively, determination four essentially clarifies the, the, essentially who's operating on site, the entities that are there as we've been discussing over time. And aside from that, not, not much of substance has, has changed. You know, that ultimately the decision references the sixty days of crushing. That is. Pardon?
Sixty days?
Sixty, correct. Sixty days of crushing. And obviously, and this decision will be submitted as it always is with their RCC permit, so the, the state will receive that. Again, the, you know, the condition regarding, you know, sampling if, if it is required by the state. So that's number seven. That's, that's spelled out. And we would be, or the planning board would be a party to that. If, if it is required, we would get all those, all the samples and reporting. And obviously, we'd have an ongoing dialogue with the state if, if that was the case. And, and that's essentially it. Other than that, it's just incorporating, you know, all the findings and facts and conditions that have been discussed to date.
I have one question. Bulk storage special permit decision amendment, number five. Were we talking about, I'm sorry, no, that's not, excuse me. Decision language, item number three. The applicant shall not sell, deliver, otherwise distribute, press or reprocess well. I, I realize that's what we've all agreed to, but I just want to make sure there's a mechanism in there that allows the transfer of materials from asphalt engineering LLC to the company that owns the property. Eli, do you follow me?
Yeah, I think that would fall on Eli to, to make sure he's comfortable.
Yeah, I certainly understand what the chairman's saying. So if it's no outside, and then we define our terms there, sales of the reprocessed asphalt pavement shall be permitted. Do we want to add just one clarification, then saying that transfer of material between these two entities shall not be, I don't know how we want to word it, but.
I would just say transfer material. I don't want to use the word sale because that may have some financial impact for you.
Eli, I don't know if you, if you want to take a peek at determination number five and whether or not that would suffice. It discusses the entities of common ownership. Again, you know, up to, I think everyone's agreed that we're, that we wanted to make sure that, that, that issue was covered, so.
Right.
Eli, I thought there was an entity called Farm Road or Front Street Development.
Right, which, which is the applicant. So that when we state the applicant, that is Farm Street Realty or one that, I forget what the, it's up on the first page, Farm Street Property Management LLC.
Yeah, I think that with, with Jim's piece here in the determinations, number five, we define our entities pretty well, and then by having the no outside piece to that.
I don't want to shortchange it.
I, yeah, I appreciate us taking the time to go over it, but I think that Jim's done a good job drafting this.
And, and I, I will, I will say I also bounced it off the building inspector who will be doing the enforcement, and, and he was comfortable with this language as well.
Let me make sure Farm Street Property Management is covered. Any questions?
No, I have no questions. As long as we're signing the right draft.
I was able to print off the new draft. My mind's marked up, so we'll have to.
I don't think it's a big deal. You can sign the, the back sheet, and I can make sure that whatever wants revised, I can get that from Jim tomorrow and double check. That'll be fine.
Do we need a motion to sign the, sign this? I believe we do. I entertain a motion to sign, first of all, a storm warning permit. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. A motion passes unanimously. I'm also gonna need a motion for the bulk, one ninety Farm Street bulk storage special permit decision amendment. Again, I'll need a second.
Second.
Motion to the floor has been seconded in the additional discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. A motion passes unanimously.
So Amy, you and Jim will coordinate the right draft.
Yes, and what I'll do is have you sign those sheets, the back sheets, and then I'll put it together.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with Amy in the morning.
Kind of play, I, I believe we may need a motion to close the public hearing.
I, we, I think the board did that at the last meeting. This was, that is a continuation to sign.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this process. It's been very interesting process from our very first meeting.
And we, the applicants are listening now. They're actually in the car because they had to go pick up their children. They didn't realize the other hearing was gonna take quite as long. But on behalf of all of us, and obviously especially the applicants, we do thank you for your, your patience and your willingness to work with us and all of this, and we look forward to continuing our success in Bellingham here. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Best of luck. I believe we have some minutes to approve. This motion is going to approve the September, oh, September meeting minutes. Have a second? Second? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
One thing the board could take this on for just an additional thing.
I'm sorry?
I have one item that was unanticipated.
Go ahead.
Bring it up. Basically, this was for the Red Mill subdivision. You, you had actually the special permit, you'd signed it. We just need another signed copy because the applicant wants the original, and the town clerk has to keep the original. So they need another original to basically record it. So that's what this is, just an original page, just to resign, so they can fit it to the registry. So there's more papers. So I've just put right here where you can sign, if that's okay. And right here.
While we're doing that, Jim, one question. You might, I don't know if you, if you know, but I noticed that the, the solar field on Maple Street, at least my untrained eye was kind of done, or they're, they're not doing work, or maybe they're doing site work, but the gate's not up yet. It seems like all the arrays are in place. Do you know anything about the gate when all of that will be done?
Yep, yeah, so it's not quite done yet. It's, it's pretty, pretty close. Last I talked, it's only been about a week or two ago, I talked with the building inspector about the walkthrough, because one of the conditions is a safety walkthrough with the, the fire, the, the fire chief and, and the building inspector and a decommissioning bond. And both of those haven't been completed yet, and so they haven't signed off on the certificate of completion yet. But I'll follow up with the get. I actually have a seven AM meeting with him, so I'll, I'll ask that question and make sure that he follows up with the gate specifically.
Thank you. I assume Jim, at some point, will have to vote on the decommissioning bond.
So the condition was spelled out that there wouldn't be an agreement through town council and, and essentially the, I forget the exact language, but the, the number is equivalent to what we've been doing for all the other solars. So it's by the megawatt, and, and so it's just a, a formula. And so it's a pretty substantial number, too. I believe EMC, though it's been a while ago, was something along the lines of one hundred and fifty thousand for decommissioning. So, and they have to put that bond up for twenty years.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. We have an emergency. Good night, guys.